Good evening, I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(laughing).
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 And before we begin this evening, if we could take a moment of silence to remember the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you. So this evening, as we start, we do have a new alderperson that will be sworn in this evening. And typically, I'm not sure what you're going to do with them.
Right in front. Do it in front.
Do you want to do it in front?
Yep.
Camera's on.
You can do it this way.
Got to be on camera right away.
Did you meet our hair and makeup person?
(laughing).
I thought that was those two already.
We did it up.
There you go.
Yeah, they did. So, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I am Schmidt.
I am Schmidt.
Having been appointed to the position of District Five Alderman.
Having been appointed to the position of District Five Alderman.
Of the City of Manassas, Winnebago, and Kelly Mac Counties.
Of the City of Manassas, Winnebago County, and Kelly Mac Counties.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of Alderman.
Discharge the duties of Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
(applause).
(inaudible) official. Thank you. So I said, it's not official until you're sworn in.
And now, if we could have the role that we have officially have eight Aldermen again.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenick. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Tom Grotty. Alderman Ted Grotty. Alderman Repella. Alderman Nichols.
The first item on the agenda this evening are two public hearings.
We have a rezoning at 1530 Onidas Street from Community Business to General Commercial District. Director Schrader, did you have anything to add to that?
The only thing I'll add is, so this is the property just north of the former BJ Clancy's property that was attached last fall to the City of Manassas. By state statute, an ordinance or a property that is detached from one municipality and attached to another municipality maintains that same zoning district as a previous municipality until such a time that a zoning district was designated. So again, this is more of a cleanup to designate this as, the same as the adjoining properties, the two to the south BJ Clancy's, from the former Village of Fox Crossing zoning district of B2 to C1.
So with that, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on the proposed rezoning this evening? Go ahead. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Andy Berg with Kimley Horn. I'm a civil consultant for Casey's, and I'll be here and be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
So seeing no one else for that public hearing, we'll close that one, call that one to a close. And Item Two is a special use permit on the same group of properties. Director Schrader?
Yeah, so combined with the rezoning, as well as some other items on the agenda tonight, including in the consent agenda, a CSM to combine three properties into one property. So that would include the BJ Clancy property, the vacant property to the north, and the property to the west, which currently has some parking lot and a garage attached to it. So part of this is to combine all those three properties into one property and actually reconstruct or demolish the former restaurant and construct a new Casey's General Store at that facility. It's basically what is presented, again, is a Casey's gas station, roughly just under 4,000 square feet of commercial space, and then five double-sided pumps, so 10 total pumps on that facility. And then included with the overall site is just the parking, traffic circulation, lighting, landscaping, things of that nature. There is a large landscape buffer on the north and west side of the proposed property to add to a screening buffer for those residential properties. I will leave it at that. The Plan Commission did review both of, or all four of these items, the rezoning, CSM, special use permit, and site plan, and did recommend approval.
So with that, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on the special use permit this evening? Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing also to a close, and we'll move on to the report of department heads, staff, and consultants. And Director Tungate is here this evening to talk about the city's comprehensive outdoor recreation plan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to introduce Trish Naugh. She's with the East Central Regional Planning Commission. She played an instrumental part in putting this comprehensive outdoor recreation plan together. And I just want to kind of talk about the, I guess, the outline for tonight. There's a lot of information there. We know that. There's like 88 pages there or so. So this process started over a year ago, well over a year ago, and the plan has gone through a lot of formatting changes and so forth. And to kind of watch the clock a little bit tonight, we're going to be going through this thing fairly quickly. And I would like to point out that the chapters we'll probably spend the most time on are Two, Four, and Six. Two is the goals and objectives. Four is sort of the trends in outdoor recreation. And Six is, are the recommendations. I think it's important to note that we had a lot of public input in this process. We went out, we had a public survey, we had an online survey, we had a written part of that survey as well. We held a couple workshops last spring where the public was invited to come in. So this isn't, you know, just Brian in his office coming up with a bunch of ideas and throwing in a plan. We really wanted to make this the people's plan, and I think we did that. And so, we will entertain, I think, some questions along the way. We probably could spend, you know, all night going through this document if we wanted to, but I think if we can handle it, I think a few questions along the way. And Trish has done a lot of these plans for Winnebago County, a lot of townships, so she's very experienced in writing these plans. And we're happy that we now have a more comprehensive plan. I think the one we had previous was, you know, a little, small and undetailed, but now we're really, I think, have a much more comprehensive plan. So with that, I guess Trish will turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, Aldermen. So again, Brian basically had told you the corp that we had put together. Again, it did take a little bit longer process, but I think you will find that the plan is a lot of detail. And that was kind of one of our goals, to actually do that. So really what I want to do is just highlight, kind of go chapter by chapter with each of the, with the document itself. And you guys can stop me, just ask a quick question or something like that, but we don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this. Like Brian said, I'll highlight this a little bit. So if you want to head to Chapter One possibly here, again, we started the process probably early in 2019. It took a little bit longer, but again, it's a comprehensive plan. The reason why you really have to do these plans are to be eligible for grants. So every five years, a city or community or municipality should have a corp or a comprehensive outdoor recreation plan in place. And that is not just for DNR grants, but it's for health grants, it's for any other kind of funding sources that you would have. And it's definitely good if you have the rankings for them. And if the project is actually listed in the corp, you actually have a better chance of getting that project and that money from the corp itself. So again, this is a vision for the future. This plan is not governed by state statutes. There's cost estimates that you will see in here. We're not approving any costs or prices or anything like that. It's just a guide for a vision for the, for the city for the future. So, you know, if you look at Chapter One, we developed four phases. Looking at Phase One, where are you guys? So we're looking at where is the city right now? Then we're going to look at where is the future? Where does the city really want to go? So you see the four phases. And then Chapter Six is really, how do you want to get there besides Chapter Two? What are the goals and specific objectives that you're going to have? This whole project came about through our East Central Technical Assistance Program. So each year we will send out and, because Winnebago County is a member, City of Manassas falls underneath that, and that's really how this plan came about. It was through Brian requesting our services to complete the plan itself. So just kind of wanted to throw that in there for a little bit. We can kind of move into Chapter Two, which will really tell you, where do you want to be? So what we ended up doing through the Park Board, we sat down, we did an exercise, we went through a bunch of goals. We did the SMART goal access. So SMART, S, specific. Are your goals measurable? Are they achievable? Are they realistic? Are they timely? So using that, hopefully we were smart enough to actually get the goals and objectives that the city actually really needed. If you look on page, I think it's Two dash Two, I'll just highlight a few of those things. Might be able to see here. But there's six SMART goals that we'll end up having to look at. So you have the health and fitness, variety of activities, conservation, accessibility and design, partnerships, and then is it cost-effective? Can we actually go through that? So each one of the goals that you see listed are prioritized by objectives, meeting one of those SMART goals. So Goal One, for instance, provide health and fitness, open spaces and trails. We want to get that system going. You know, what are the trail projects out there? So that one was basically based on trails. Goal Two was, what are your facilities? What do you have out there to offer residents and users? So what's a variety? People want to see a pool. People want to see trails out there. They want to have playgrounds. They want to have picnic areas. You have water, so there's water-based activities besides. And seasonal, so we can't forget winter around here. And sometimes that's the case, too, because you want to have sledding hills and different things like that. Goal Three is your conservation. So you do have a lot of habitat restoration, you have the water, you have the tree canopy that's out there, you have the Manassas Conservator, Conservancy, why can't I say that word? Conservancy out there. Stormwater requirements, everything that would fall under, besides the Lawson Canal, which actually would be a very good thing for the city to, you know, look at and redevelop that whole area. Goal Number Four really pertains to your ADA compliancy. You want to make sure that you are accessible to all when looking at any new facilities, so that would fall again under Title Three. So you'd want to have handicap accessibility, your access to your playgrounds, any sidewalks, that kind of thing. And if you flip again, Goal Number Five is your partnerships. Wherever possible, you really do want to maintain those working relationships with either Greenways, your Manassas School District can actually assist with that, and even your neighbors, you know, that are really into those clubs and different variety of activities out there. And then Number Six probably is one of the important things, where is the funding? So you do want to have, what's feasible? What is cost-effective? What are my needs? What are the people's needs? You know, and kind of look at all that. So Goal, you know, all those goals come into play with those six SMART goals that we developed. Table Two dash Two gives you a little bit of the rankings that the Park Board went through and we developed, looking at the comments and everything else as far as how they rated them. Variety of activities was actually rated the highest. So you want to make sure that you're, you know, providing your user base out there. But really, all of them, all of them are very important, I think, in building what you need to have as far as a park system goes. Recreational resources, number three, we're, this is really, what do you guys have out there? What do you have to offer? What does the city really, you know, have as far as recreational resources and facilities? And to tell you, you really have a lot. You know, when I was starting to do this plan, I didn't realize there was over 235 acres of public parks and open space available in a city. I mean, that's incredible, you know, for what you guys have and what you have to actually maintain and take care of. You know, Jefferson Park being one of the bigger ones, that's the one that actually gets the most used. Smith Park in there, you know, you have a variety, again, variety, good goal, community parks. You start looking at all your neighborhood parks that come into play. Castle, Clovis Grove, Hart, Pleasance, Shepherd, Barker Farm, all of these, the hidden, the new one, the Hidden Pond Park. I mean, all these are actually very, very good parks. The mini parks even that are, you know, just kind of a niche, that's actually just kind of little tucked-away little areas that people can go and play, those are important. You know, you are serving those neighborhoods, you know, regardless of that size. You know, a half acre, so what? You know, they're there. You need that. The special use, you're looking at your Memorial Building, you got the Bridgetower Museum, Municipal Beach, you got the plazas now, you got the Mill Street Terminus, I mean, you got the Riverwalk, so there's a lot going on. There's a lot going on in this city. You know, the pool, for, you know, what it's worth, that is, you know, probably a very useful, high priority item. And then you're starting to look at the trails. The trails are really kind of your routes. It guides the system. It really connects everything together, and that's exactly what you want in your park system. So, you know, the boat launches and everything else that kind of just tie that all in together along with the natural areas. Along with those, you have the schools, you have the lock site, you do have a heckerod that's sitting here in the city. You do have intertwined of Village of Fox Crossing also. So there's a lot going on within the city boundaries. All right, we'll get into Chapter Four. Did anybody have any quick questions? I went through those a little bit fast, but it was pretty, I think, straightforward. For recreational needs, we look at usually a standard. And that's just a guide, guideline. 10 acres for every 1,000 residents is usually what we use for a typical city of this size. It's not to say that you could use 9.5, I think national standards are a little bit lower than that, but this just gives us a good barometer as far as where does Manassas fit in the scope of population density. So trying to look through Chapter Four, a lot of population projection, there's a lot of numbers. Really the highlight is Table Four dash Three on page Four dash Three. And you're looking at more of how many acres are you providing now and then in the future? So if you look at maybe even say the year 2020, which is a projection, you know, you're still at a surplus of 53 acres. And these are just the parks that the city maintains. That's not to say anything else that's actually within the boundaries that others are using. So by the year 2040, you're still within over 40 acres. So there's plenty of landmass out there. So your land needs are definitely met. You start looking at your locational needs. You guys just added a new park, the Hidden Pond Park over there on the Far East Side. That was definitely needed. You have the neighborhood over there that are now utilizing another park space. So really where your barriers are with the highways, the river, everything else, you guys are very well distributed with parks and open spaces as far as service areas and what you're utilizing. Looking at your facility needs, you know, there's a good variety. You have biking, you have walking, you have kayaking, so you have all these active sports. But you also have the passive. So you can sit by the river, you can enjoy nature, you have the conservancy out there. So there's a lot of, lot of things that are going on with the trestle trail, the Loop de Lake, everything else that's going in there. When looking at your age distribution, you're servicing, you know, the highest is actually your 25 to 44-year-olds. So a lot of times when you're planning those facilities, you want to think, okay, well, what is my population distribution by age group? Who do I really want to serve right now? But that always can change, so you do want to be flexible in what you have out there as far as a facility base. So that's really what that's telling you to. So, you know, you can plan now, but you can also plan in for the future for given multi-use type things. So really, this chapter kind of gets more into the level of service when you start looking through it. It gives you a little bit more of, okay, well, my community parks are servicing, you know, 70% of my city, my user base. The neighborhood parks are serving, you know, 30%. You look at the mini parks, okay, 12 to 13%. But again, you're only looking at that buffer zone around what that park is doing, and that's exactly really what you want. So nature areas, you know, a little bit more, same thing with your special facilities and different things that you have out there. Another thing we want to highlight is on page Four dash Eight is how are you compared to the Wisconsin trends? The SCORP, which they call the State Outdoor Recreation Plan, just got released in 2019. Their, the top five state trends are actually bird, wildlife watching from home. So I guess deer feeders and everything else that are out there are working. Picnicking, tailgating, and cookouts. So I guess the Packers got something to do with the tailgate. I don't know about last night, but I guess we're okay with that. Visiting a nature center, hiking and walking, running on trails, and visiting a beach. So those were the top five. I mean, if you kind of look at it, all of those could really fit in with what the city is offering, too. So it's pretty interesting when you're starting to look at the state trends and how that compares and funnels down to municipalities. Okay, let's kind of scroll through here. There are some apps there just for reference, a lot of them. We can go into the health needs assessment. Again, this chapter is really not something that the DNR requires. I like to throw in a health needs assessment chapter because there's other grants out there. And besides, I think it's a good barometer to look at how health feeds into that planning. I mean, parks and facilities are health-based. You have that active opportunity out there that you're offering your residents and your users. So I took what the city already have, basically the health plan through the Fox Cities physically, or the physical health, the Fox Cities Community Health Survey, and just pulled a bunch of statistics that we had sitting there. So again, you want to increase activity level. You know, obesity, all that kind of stuff really ties in with any of your other health barometers. The age groups, the 18 to 34-year-olds, a lot of them said exercise is boring, it's not enjoyable. Well, you know, the parks out there, adding that variety, which is part of the goal of the, of the whole park plan, will hopefully increase that health activity base. And if you provide that opportunity, it's, if you build it, they will come. So that's basically really what it entails. Just to highlight a few things through that chapter, there's a lot of information on the county health graphics. Winnebago is pretty much right in the middle. I pulled our region as far as what East Central serves. So yeah, there's still room for improvement on that, but I think we're working towards better health and within the county itself. And how does that really relate to parks? You can look on page Five dash Five. Increase exercise increases the kind of exercise that you're going to have, it can reduce stress. So parks basically tie this all together. You know, what's aesthetically pleasing out there? Can you sit by the river? You know, reduce that stress overall. What is your variety? You've got your skate parks, basketball, tennis courts, your fitness zones. That's another thing that, you know, we can kind of look at as far as a new variety out there. And then your programming. So there's a lot of programming and activities, either with, you know, the seniors, the youth groups, everything else that you have going on. So, is there any questions? I'm kind of bruising through this. We get to the big chapter. Chapter Six is really what the plan is. This is your recommendations. So this is really where you're tying all of those goals, specific details and objectives together. So if we look at what you already have in your capital improvement plan over the next five years, as far as the recommendations and even from public survey, the six that you see on that page, the swimming pool, Jefferson Park, the trail system, the river park over here on, you know, the old Gilbert Site, we got the Marina across the street here, and the Memorial Building, those were really the six top that we looked at as far as what the city really should be, I guess, updating, or, you know, as far as what the public really wants. So it's not, again, just Brian getting the plan done and, you know, myself. I don't live in the City of Manassas, I live in Nina, but the thing is, when I come to a city, I'm on a neutral zone, I want to see these things, too. So it's just somebody, you know, coming in from an outside user base. So we look at, you know, placemaking. You know, how do you want to create these places that are public so that you can bring tourism to Manassas? And people are going to say, that's a cool city, I want to live there. I like this stuff, you know, there's a pool here, there's, you know, all of these opportunities that I can do with my family, I can walk on the trails, I can do all that. So again, you look at what placemaking really is. You know, building that, build your community around those activities. Where are those places? What is, what is the neighborhood? What is the heart of the City of Manassas? So you start looking at that social identity, that, you know, physical and cultural resource that you actually have out there. So again, most of the recommendations are highlighted, you know, according to that. So Jefferson Park, you guys just did a master plan. So a lot of the phases there are now starting, which is a really good thing, because I think if you look at the survey, it's the most highly-used park in the city. It's one of the favorite parks that surveyor users actually put on the survey itself, and that's within the Fox Cities, not, just not in the City of Manassas. That was the Fox Cities. So that's a very thing, it's a very good thing to be proud of. You have the water there, you have the lake, you have rivers. I mean, you guys have so much more than a lot of other cities that I've worked on, and they would probably be drooling over what, you know, what you guys have. And again, that's your place on the water. So that's, that's an awesome thing to actually be proud of. The Smith Park, you know, Memorial Park, Memorial Building, you know, there's a lot of wear and tear on that. But there's so much opportunity for upgrades when you start thinking of the historical reference. Castle Park, that gets used quite a bit, too. You got, you know, the ballgames out there, you got the youth groups utilizing that. So you want to actually update those dugouts, that ball field, adding in those extra playgrounds, having it as that family park. And I used to live actually right over by Castle Park, and I used to utilize that park quite a bit. So it's one of my favorites. Clovis Grove, you'll probably want to work with the schools on that. We kind of put in some new playground equipment. Hart Park, a little bit more of the EDA accessibility that one is pretty wide open. I think a lot has been done with that skate park. I do like the artistic work, I should say. Can't even talk anymore. You know, and then you kind of get into some of those mini parks that are out there. So again, you know, just some minor upgrades, I think, would spur a little bit of interest, even just some quick landscaping with some of those things. Shepherd Park, which is mostly like the gateway to the Loop de Lake, is actually getting used and utilized a little bit more. You have Barker Farm. So, you know, again, you have, you know, parks basically scattered all over the place and a lot of variety that you're offering your residents. So you can kind of go through a lot of these. Municipal Beach, you could really, I think, make that a really nice place. I've gone there many times on my lunch break and just sit by the water, it's just really relaxing. But it could use some little, you know, touches here and there, like the bathroom, maybe, you know, upgrading that playground equipment. So there's, there's just some little highlights as far as what we did, looking at some of the recommendations in there, adding some trails to the conservancy, adding maybe a small restroom over there, looking at James Island. You know, again, this is more of, you know, a bird sanctuary, but a lot of kayakers will actually go around the island, so. actually go around the island. So, it does have a lot of historical reference when you start looking at this area. So, again, you got on page 6-7, I don't want to go too much through all this, but you have a lot of, you know, dead-end streets or street ends with water access. Might as well utilize them. Put in those little seating areas, put in some vegetation, you know, really update that city look. Beautification, that's really what it comes down to, and then the parks are a lot of what that can entail and what that can offer. So, a lot of boat launches, you know, as you start looking at that, they get used quite a bit. You do have the marina there that we can utilize some, maybe some better lighting system, replacing the chain link fence, you know, just some, a lot of just little maintenance type things. But once you get down to Water Street reconstruction, I think that's where you're going to find a little bit more of, how can we urbanize that part of it? We already got Loop de Lake, how can we now take that Loop de Lake Trail from Water Street, bring them downtown? There's a lot of things to do when you get downtown. So, you know, you want to create that system, and I think that is a big key as far as that missing link that will get done. Arc Display, Mini Golf, there's a lot of things that I think can be done along that area. And that kind of leads us into the trails, the parkways. So, again, you have not just land trails, but you also have water trails. We've worked with the Heritage Parkway on quite a few things out there, adding in those kayak canoe launches. You also make sure that some of them are AD accessible so that everybody does have access to them. The South Shore River Park, right behind my office, I look at it every single day, but it's awesome, because we'll have walking meetings up there, and it's something that you need to utilize. And it's, I see people down there fishing constantly. So, and even restoring that canal, now that the Tiff District, the Gilbert Mill and all that stuff is gone, I think it's a great location. It gets used a lot. Certainly looking at the Friendship Trail, looking at possibly extending that out even on the east side over there, Loop de Little Lake again, but many, many trails and routes that are actually really, you know, that make the city great. Even the, you know, the New Providence Trail that just went in. I mean, that's an awesome trail that now you can utilize and go from one end over to the other. Looking on page 6-11, just kind of browsing through some of this stuff, again, economic diversity, looking at your beautification, you know, how can you bring those people, again, downtown? How can you make downtown a great place to be? And why would people want to come down there? While they're shopping, you've got great restaurants, I mean, there's just some multitude of things now going on in Manassia. So, bringing that Emerald Trail, that whole system together, I think is great. Looking at pages 6 to 12 really just kind of gives you what the public wanted. Going through some of that data, I'm not going to go through all of it, but trails, aquatics, events, those were the highest. So, pools, splash pad, you know, aquatics was actually a pretty big, big topic when we were looking at the public informational meeting and just having that input from the survey itself. So, again, utilizing the trails, the pool, the parks, all that just kind of fit in together. But there's a lot of data that really went into this, a lot of work, but it does give you a really good, I think, picture as far as what you need to do. Make the parks safer, beautification, pet-friendly, better tree maintenance, upgrade the pool. I mean, these were just the commonalities of everything that we got into the survey itself. Sue. Okay, we're almost done. I promise. It's a big document. Chapter seven, basically just highlights the recommendations of what you had in there. So, that's your future planning. It just really gets down to really what your other thoughts and ideas could be. You know, looking at their, utilizing that master planning process that you did for Jefferson, looking at the pool reconstruction, maintenance, you know, redoing some of that, the tennis courts that are out there. So, a lot of it's just really maintenance and upgrades, which is really what it is. Facilities out there, you know, adding some of the newer things to them will actually bring that all together, even highlighting your linear recreational trail system, which is something that I think is a highlight of what it is. So, getting that Emerald necklace together, putting those parks and jewels and everything else, getting those all connected with your trails. And then you have your CIP and pretty much the appendices. So, relevance of possible park improvements are really on page 7-5, gives you really what's highly relevant, your accessibility, your beautification, Jefferson Park, you need to get some marketing out there, pools, playgrounds, safety in the parks are the highest as far as the relevance on that end of things. And that's really it. You have grants and funding opportunities that I usually like to list in the back. So, there's a lot of different information out there as far as how some of these things can be funded, doesn't always have to come out of the general founder bond. So, there's other things that are out there. The Sea Froats, the Parks Audits, which is another program through the National Parks and Rec Association, when I went out and did all your inventory on the parks, I actually did a quick survey of the safety aspects of it, and that's that back table that you'll see as far as how do you get to the parks safely. So, again, that's what, along the lines of Sea Froats of School, which we run in our office too as a big program. And then Brian just, we decided, well, let's just have the whole capital improvement project plan in the back, which is your appendix C. And that's your comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Lot of information, short time, went through it. Is there any questions?
Someone has to have a question for Trish.
Any highlights?
Here's why you're not getting any questions. We've been dealing with this for a very long time. A lot of us are very familiar with, with every aspect of the situations that you brought up. I mean, thank you for putting this together. It's understandable that we need this, especially if we're going to start seeking funding. This is a, a nice thing to have, it works for us then. But each of us in our own districts and that, we know the needs of our parks and stuff like that. So, it's no disrespect to you or anything like that.
No, not at all.
It's just, when I was reading this, I'm like, yep, yep, yep. So.
Yep. And again, it's just a plan, it's a vision, you know, you're definitely, I would say, well-aware of what's going on, but at least then you have the tool to go after some funding if you need it.
And obviously, because it's in the plan, doesn't necessarily mean either that we have to agree to all of these things.
Correct. No, not at all.
There's kind of a feeling out there that that's what it's saying, but it's, it's a guideline.
Exactly. Yeah. You don't need to go and spend every single, you don't have to actually accept every single recommendation that's within the plan. It's there to guide you later on, and when you do make that decision, or if that decision actually is made, at least it's there, and it's basically just a reference for you.
Alderman Teber.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent plan.
Thank you.
Working for East Central Wisconsin. Is there a kind of a blueprint or some sort of a helpful booklet or something to give multiple grants, you know, if it's public works, or if it's park or health, or what's your feelings on that?
Yeah, and I think that's something that we're, we're trying to work for as far as putting together probably a grant guide or a funding guide, and that's really where that appendix B is coming after. It's a matter of each community is pretty different too. So, you know, we, we pretty much take the approach that DNR stewardship funding kind of guides what we have to put in here, because the DNR has guidelines within the comprehensive plan itself. But that's not to say that there's other health grants and different things that could go into a fact sheet and then utilize that as a checklist is probably what you're looking at.
Are you aware, since you're a state agency, are you aware of any type of training programs or programs with the grant process or?
I think the DNR, I know they, they have helpful things that are online that tells you how to write the grant itself, you know, what are the rankings, how you should actually put some of these things together. But as far as probably universal guide, there probably isn't, because each grant is going to be a little bit different. Again, you're going to look at ranking points, you know, if you have a corp, okay, that's five, you know, five points, if the project's water-based, you get another five points, that type of thing.
What about the federal grants? Are those pretty much tied in with kind of dovetailed state grants and they kind of carry along with that, or are they completely?
Sometimes. It's a lot more, I think, federal highway that we deal with, and it's more based on the trails itself. You've got the Transportation Alternative Program that's out there, or the TAP grants. Governor Evers, I believe, just put together, I think, gosh, I want to even say, can't even think of how much money it was, but he just approved so much more money for the multimodal grants that are out there too, and that's, that's actually state-based, that's there. So, that one should be coming up pretty soon. I know some of our communities have actually looked at applying for that.
Is there any other type of vehicles? We all know the private and public. Is there any other type of?
If you have, I would say, a 501(c)(3), you do have more opportunity out there. So, if you're working with, say, the school district, or you're working with, say, a recreational club, and the city kind of goes along their lines, or, you know, maybe B's the grant E of that, you do have more opportunity with a 501(c)(3).
Okay. Again, very nice.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming out tonight, Trish.
Yeah.
And thank you for all your work in, on the project. It's been a lot of interesting discussions over the past year.
We have. But I think you guys got a very good document, and I think hopefully that will guide you into the future a little bit more. So, again, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Do you want to add anything, Brian, or?
There is a resolution.
There is a resolution later on in the agenda.
So, an hour into our meeting, we are on item two. We do have the minutes and communications this evening. Alderman Sevanik.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive minutes A through G and communications H through M.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The motion carries. Item G, is public comments any matter of concern to the city? Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are 11 items this evening. Does anyone wish to have any of those items separated? Alderman Sevanik.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like items from the Administration Committee to be separated and the items from the Board of Public Works to be separated.
Alderman Nichols.
Items seven and nine, please.
Any others? So, the items that are remaining are the minutes from the Common Council from January 6th, the changing the city attorney position to include the Human Resource Director, the Plan Commission recommendations from January 7th to recommend a special use permit for several parcels along Midway Road and Oneida Street, the proposed Casey's Development, and the certified survey map for the same area. Does anyone wish to make a motion for those items? Alderman Sevanik.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve, one, the Common Council, minutes of 1/6/2020. Item eight, changing the city attorney's position to include the Human Resource Director, and the Planning Commission recommendations for the special use permit and the certified survey map with the conditions.
Is there a second, there's a motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grotty? And if we could have a roll call vote, please. Apparently, you're vacant, Dan.
I'm not.
No, you're vacant up on the screen.
We didn't have time to.
I've been told that.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item two? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the acceptance of the quote from Great American Insurance Company for the underground storage tank insurance in the amount of $10,943.75.
It's a motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grotty. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. I don't know. As long as you didn't vote Debbie, I think we're okay.
I didn't, yeah. Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item three? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to accept the payment for the Advanced Construction Inc., contract unit number 2019-07, for the Province Terrace Pond modifications in the amount of $196,499.68, payment number one.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? See if the clerk gets to vote this time? No.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item four? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I make the motion, I'd like to, Director Corey, we had the, a little bit of missed numbers last time, so what he did is he put in the right numbers for this payment in our packets and to let the audience out there know also. So, with that, I will make the motion to accept the payment to MCC Inc., contract unit number 2019-04, for the new street construction and reconstruction. That's for various locations in the amount of $52,813.45, payment number three.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Alderman Langdon. Oh, go ahead, if you'd like to make the motion for item five.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion for number five, for the change order to accept, accept the change order for Summers Construction Contract Unit Number 2019-01, for new street construction. That's for the concrete pavement with integral grail curb and concrete curb and gutter, and asphaltic concrete pavement and concrete sidewalk. And that, and that's an addition of $8,730.65, change number one and final.
Second.
It's a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item six? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Make the motion to accept the payment to Summers
Make the motion to accept the payment to Summers Construction Contract Unit Number 2019-01, as for new street construction, concrete pavement with integral curb, concrete curb and gutter, and asphaltic concrete pavement and concrete sidewalk. That is in the amount of $8,730.65, and that is payment number seven and final.
It's a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Becky, yours did. Uh-oh, there it goes.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Alderman Grady.
I thought we were going to number seven.
We are.
Okay. I thought maybe. Go for it. Okay. I'd like to make the motion then for the change of Administrative Service Director to Director Finance Director and place at grade two on the non-representative salary range.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. The Administrative Services Director position was created in 2013 using a very transparent process. The qualifications, the job description, and the salary were all discussed in open meetings at the committee level, brought back for consideration and approval. I know that because I was part of that process, and there may have been one other person sitting up here with me right now that was part of that as well. Alderman Langdon, yep. Today, we have a recommendation that results from a back office meeting between the mayor and certain aldermen, and it's this circumventing of the process, this lack of transparency that raises red flags and is the reason that I cannot support this change.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on, roll call seven one.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion for keeping the Human Resources Coordinator position at a grade 15 on the non-representative salary range and increasing the salary by 3% because of the additional responsibilities.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Repel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just a little concerned with the 3% salary increase. It's at grade 15. I would just like to not have the 3% salary increase. I know she could be given the $500 bonus for her extra work for the year. I'd like to see that instead of the 3% go down to a 1% or 1.5% pay raise, something like that. I'll shoot for a 1% pay raise. Is there a second?
So you're making a motion to amend to a 1%?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second for the amendment? It's a motion and a second to amend the motion to increase the salary by 1%? Do we have any discussion? We gotta do some cutting and pasting in to make it pop up on the screen. Maybe. There it is. Okay, so if we could have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Motion appeals on roll call two seven, two six, sorry. Didn't count.
So we're still on the original motion. Is there any further discussion on the original motion? Alderman Repel.
Could we make an amendment to 2% pay raise?
If you can get a second.
Thank you.
There's not there?
Yep.
Okay, good. Okay, if we could have a roll call vote on the amendment, please.
Motion appeals on roll call two six.
So we're still on the original motion. If we don't have any other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please, on the original motion.
Motion carried on, roll call five three.
Item J is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for January 9th through 16th. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the, to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of January 9th through January 16th, 2020, in the amount of $7,293,428.83.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Oh, was there? There it is.
There we are.
Okay.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for, to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2019 through 2021 licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated January 16th, 2020.
It's a motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item L is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance one. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of ordinance one, 2020, and ordinance amending Title 13 by making certain changes to the district. This is at 1530 Oneida Street, from a B2 Community Business District to C1 General Commercial District, introduced by myself and recommended by the Plan Commission.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item two is the resolution one dash 20. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. At this time, I'll make the motion for the R1, 2020 City of Menasha Comprehensive Outdoor Recreational Plan for the years 2020 through 2024, introduced by Alderman Ted Grady, myself, recommended by the board of public, or the board of park and recreational board, I'm sorry.
There's a motion and a second. We got what you meant.
I don't know.
By the two. It's a motion by the, a motion and a second by both Alderman Grady. Any discussion? Alderman Sevenek.
Thank you, Mayor. As I had stated before, I had some reservations of voting on this. As long as I understand, and it is a guide and not where all of a sudden I have the mayor later on saying to me, well, you voted for the comprehensive plan. I mean, what do you expect from us? You know, I can't, there's many things in here I don't necessarily 100% agree with, maybe 99%. So I just want that to be clear. So I will support this this evening, but I wanted to make that point.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with you, Alderman Sevenek. I too, you know, look at this as a blueprint or a plan or a direction, but yes, not everything's just going to get rubber stamped as to what this corp plan does state. So thank you for your input.
Alderman Taylor.
I'd just echo both the conversations here with Alderman Grady and Alderman Sevenek.
So I guess I'd like to, since we had this little discussion, we should kind of put forward what this means. This is direction for us as we start putting together the budget in the coming years. Of course, the council approves the budget, so without an approval on the budget, these things won't happen. But these, this will be the guideline for what does appear in the budget in the future.
If you're a mayor.
As ever the mayor, it will be. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item M is appointments. There are two this evening. Alderman Grady.
Yes, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make the approval for appointment of Jennifer S. Sassman as Financial Director, and she obtains her Certified Public Accountant CPA certification in a 2.5-year span from the date of appointment, as recommended by the Personnel Committee.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Sevenek. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Congratulations, Jennifer. I'm not sure if this appointment is a congratulations or a sentence, but is there a motion for the appointment to the Room Tax Commission as well? Alderman Sevenek.
I was thinking the same thing, Mayor. Sorry, Jennifer. Anyways, I'm gonna agree with the mayor's appointment of yourself, Jennifer Sassman, to the Room Tax Commission for the term of 1/20 of 2020 to 5/31 of 2020.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is that just to fill out the term in the meantime?
Yes.
And then we'll be redoing that in July or something?
Sure. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item O is public comments, any matter that was listed on the agenda this evening? Does anyone wish to make any comments? No? Do we have a motion to adjourn? It's a motion and a second. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.